All right, welcome to another episode of Kiwis Kane Stories where neighbors meet neighbors. Today, we're doing a special for the individuals or the candidates running for village council. As we know, the elections are coming up, so it's very exciting. Today, we have Oscar Sardinas. He's a resident of the Ki for thirty seven years. He's an active member of the community, president of the Kiwis Kane Education of the Children and Education Foundation. He's an appointed member of the Educational Advisory Board of the Village and elected. He's an elected member of ISAC, which is the Education Excellence School Advisory Committee. And a softball coach. How are you, Oscar?
I'm good. That was a mouthful. I'm very good, Alejandro. How are you?
Doing good, doing good. Thank you for joining us today.
You know, I feel there's this intro that you give, and I feel there needs to be a little intro too. So I'm going to do a little shout out for you, Ale. Because we were just talking offline just before, and I'm quite, I've always been quite amazed at the remarkable people that we have living on this island. And Alejandro has taken that thought of mine. And I believe it was here his first, and he's created this podcast. And I was looking through his YouTube video, and those of you who haven't checked it out, please do. There are remarkable videos on there. And you do a great job. That's a great service to remind people of what we can find here locally. It's fantastic. Thank you for doing what you do, and most importantly, thank you for doing this and giving us an opportunity, all the candidates an opportunity to tell you the constituency, their neighbors, just a little bit about who we are, so that you can make an informed decision. Thank you, man.
Anytime, man. It's been a lot of fun since I started during the pandemic, and I just, there's no signs of stopping. So I'm looking forward to meet more of our amazing neighbors. So thank you.
It's amazing. Don't stop.
So I have an icebreaker question for you.
Okay.
What is the best piece of advice you have ever been given?
A couple come to mind. Number one, probably the most basic is doing the right thing is always the right thing to do. Maybe some advice regarding peer group and how important it is to have a peer group. And how to elevate yourself. For example, I was told once, never, never try to be the smartest person in the room. If you find yourself doing that, make sure you find another room. Because at the end of the day, you become the average of the ten or fifteen people that you hang around the most. So these were all good pieces of advice. And then, and then from a fatherhood perspective, I was told once that the best way to be a good father is to be the example and the invitation as opposed to telling your kids what to do, number one. And number two, I think our greatest responsibility is not necessarily telling our kids what to do with their lives, but rather preparing them for adulthood the best way that you can. And really knowing your kids so that you can facilitate their ability to really make a difference in the world. Those are a few.
Awesome. Thank you. So what is the most important thing in your life today?
Hands down, my family. Sorry, that kind of choked me up. Good thoughts, all of them, I assure you. I was a peculiar kid when I was little. People would ask me what I wanted to be when I grew up, and it was a combination of Peter Pan and a father, a good father. It was always a strange answer, and the Peter Pan part wasn't the strange part. It was the one that I said I wanted to be a good dad, because it seemed like something a young person wouldn't necessarily be thinking about. And I think the inspiration comes from my parents doing such a good job and sacrificing so much for me and my brothers. My father came from Cuba at a very young age by himself. And he's been able to find a way to make his first best decision ever, which is marry my mom, have three young men at a time that was tumultuous at the very least. He was alone with very little help, and he overcame an incredible amount of adversity to give my brothers and I the life that we have. So yeah, the most important thing for me is definitely my family. I too, and this will be the very, one of the very few times that I pat myself on the back, but I also made a very important decision in my life, and that was marrying my wife. For those of you who don't know, it is my rock, and he's been my biggest fan and my biggest supporter. And so, yeah, that's, that's, that's my answer. That's the most important thing in my life.
You know, I had, this is not the first time that Oscar jumps on the show. We, we talked about the, the Education Children's Foundation that he leads, you know, and I met your wife at the reception that was held a couple of weeks ago for the new principal. So it was great to get to know about her during our first podcast. And then now I actually got to meet her in person. We got to chat a little bit, so it was, it was great to, to meet her.
By the way, full disclosure on that, you're one of the few people, actually, probably more now, that have heard the, the story of how I met my wife. And I remember we ended up cutting it out of the first one. My wife wanted to kill me. She'd probably want to kill me now too. But anyway, I appreciate that you finally got to meet her, Alex. She's, she's heard a lot about you as well.
So tell us, what was the inspiration behind running for office?
I, I had already made a decision that I would serve this community. First of all, I made a decision to come back to this community. So you mentioned here, I've been a resident for thirty some odd years. Truth be told, I did leave. I left for a career. I left for college. I left abroad. I worked abroad for about seven years for a global supply chain company, living in Asia Pacific. Incredible experience and one that I, biggest lesson was the importance of perspective. And then I came back four years ago, and I've been fighting to come back for a very long time, always knowing that I wanted to serve this community. Where does that come from? I, like I said, I, I came here when I was about thirteen, fourteen years old. My parents were brilliant in bringing me here. It changed my life, the trajectory of my life. But very soon after us moving here, we had a almost tragedy happen in our family, where we had an accident that caused a family member to be hospitalized for a very long extended period of time. Something happened. I was introduced to the lesson of community. Just days after it happened, this community who had only been introduced to my family for a little over a year and a half to two years, came to the rescue. My parents, for all intensive purposes, were absent because they were dealing with what was going on in our family. And the community came to take care of my brother and I. I mean, I remember having a table. It was a seven foot long table, maybe four feet wide, and it was filled with food and casseroles and all kinds of things. My house became a revolving door of people just checking in on us. You know, there's certain things you remember in life that shape us, and that really shaped me. I told myself in that moment that not only I had landed on an island paradise, but physically, but it was actually figuratively a paradise. Small town ideals and values that really came together. And we saw ourselves as a very unified community. And, and so that was one of the inspirations to serve specifically here. The second one, and in no particular order, is really my kids. I mentioned it before, and one of the pieces of advice is, you know, in a world with parents struggle with everything that we have to do in our lives, on top of that, raise other human beings. Maybe we take it too far sometimes, and we try to impose our own beliefs on our kids. And I think what's important is talking and discussing the values, but also just knowing your kids and being the example and the invitation. What that means is do the things that you would like to emulate your kids to do. Perfect example, I, I tend to say hello to a lot of people. I go into the elevator with my daughter, a stranger walks in or a neighbor, and I start to talk to them. And he leaves, and my, my daughter, very, very inquisitive, says to me, Bobby, did you, did you know that person? And my answer is, no, I didn't. She's like, well, why did you talk to him? And I said, well, did you notice how that person came into the elevator looking a certain kind of way? And when they left, didn't they seem very happy to you? And they seemed, you know, fulfilled and liking the conversation? And maybe they liked to have been heard. And my daughter looks at me, and she says, yeah, I did. Well, fast forward a week later, we're in the elevator again. A stranger walks in, and what does my daughter do? Hi, how are you? My name is Sienna. What's your name? And in that moment, you realize, wow, these kids, they have this amazing ability to understand certain things even without words. So I think it's more important. I think kids generally question what they're told, but what they see is what they emulate. So I think that's very important. So two, two parts, right? The community did a lot for me, and so I'm looking to pay it forward, and I just want to be an excellent example. And then the other, and then the third one was when I, when I was posed with the idea of running for council two years ago by a very close friend who thought that I would add value in this respect, I asked my wife, the most important person in the world, and had she told me that it wasn't a good idea, I probably would not have run. And my wife looked me straight in the eyes and said, if this is what you want to do, I think that you will be great, and I will support you. And so that's another motivation to make my wife proud and to make sure I make our community and our neighbors proud. Do the best that I can to add value.
And I have a two-part question. What are the most important issues you think Kiwis Kane is facing today? And how would you try to tackle those issues?
Language for me is very important. So when you say issues, I'm going to suggest that they're just circumstances, not necessarily good or bad. But there are a lot, a lot of things going on on this island, right? Number one, and probably the most foot forward at the moment is our infrastructure. The island was built many, many, many years ago, has had a lot of upgrades and, and whatnot and improvements. But what it's really looking at is we're coming to a day and age where we really need to do something big to prepare for the next two, three, four, five decades. I'm one to believe that we have everything that we need to combat, whether it's global warming or resiliency needs or stormwater, et cetera, et cetera. But infrastructure is a big part of it. And what does that mean really? It means the hardening of our utilities. Are we going to harder them? Are we going to drill down underground? It means beach renourishment or potentially breakwater, breakwater blockage to keep our sandy beaches intact. It means potentially raising roads or removing stormwater at an expedient rate, but at a rate that allows us to also filter that, filter that water to make sure that we're not polluting the bays around us. What else? Education is an issue, or was over the last couple of years. And now we have this incredible opportunity where we've not only built a relationship with Miami-Dade County Public Schools through the superintendent of schools himself, but we also have new administrators that are working with the community to really elevate what we're doing. Teams, team programming. You know, I remember growing up as a kid. You know, one of the things they say about kids, the most dangerous thing about child being raised in a community is boredom, right? Non-engagement, because of the lack of that kind of engagement or boredom or programming, kids start to wonder what to do next and sometimes make bad decisions. And so I really believe that we have an opportunity. I think we do great with the little ones. I think we do great, and we probably could do better with our aging population. But really, the teen population is someone who not only are going to be our future leaders and the people that we're going to have to rely on to take care of us, but they're also the people that are most prone to making bad decisions because of all the changes that happen in such a brief period of time. I'm reading a book right now called Untangled, How to Maneuver Being a Father to Two Daughters. And it's, it's eye opening and the things that I'm learning there. And so I think teen programming is something we need to look at. Local businesses, you know, we've grown. And it's beautiful to see now the countless restaurants and eateries and places that we can shop that now are bustling, right? We went through a really tough two years, but I remember when I first moved here and there were thirty seven hundred people on this island. I was, I didn't understand how businesses could survive. I mean, outside of Vernon's and the Donut Gallery, nothing else could survive here, right? And those were staples of our community. I remember doing malt, chocolate malt shakes at Vernon's. And then I remember going to the Donut Gallery every morning. And then late, late at night, or the next morning coming from Miami Beach, right? But how, how can we help these local businesses? Are we listening to the local businesses enough to see, to help them, to support them, to bring more traffic? Just to, just to find out what it is that they're requiring. I mean, they're going through their own challenges, right? We have a vision plan. So we did one for twenty twenty. We're now preparing one for twenty forty. It is an all bells and whistles, blue sky idea of what we would like the island to be, should money, money not be an issue? Obviously, it is, and financing is. But I truly believe that if you don't have a roadmap, right? If you don't have an X marks the spot, how can you get there? And that's all this is. But we have to be mindful and thoughtful about the things that we put into this vision plan that become a kind of a beacon of hope and development for this island for many years to come. I think about sea level rise. We talked a little bit about the beaches, aging population. I don't think there's anything more important than to sometimes, from time to time, stop and give homage to the people that came before us. We talked earlier about the remarkable amount of people that live here today in Kiwis Kane. But what about those that lived before us on here on Kiwis Kane? How did Kiwis Kane even become a thing? It was a thought in somebody else's head that became a reality. How do we continue to play homage, pay homage to these, this aging population, my parents included, my grandparents? I mean, they're, they were fathers. They were single men, women. They were fathers and mothers, grandparents. They were visionaries. They were council members. They were mayors. How can we allow them to continue to live a vibrant life in a place that sometimes seems to be less and less friendly? Whether it be because of rising prices, whether it be because some of these people are on fixed income, what can we do to help them? And the best thing that we can do is really first listen to them, see what they need. We have incredible programming at the community center for these elderly people. I had no idea to what extent, except I went to a Rotary meeting the other day, and I heard Roxy give a presentation. If not, if some of you don't know Roxy, you have to meet her. She runs a lot of the adult programming at the community center. Remarkable, remarkable. Funny, in that Rotary club, I even had some people sitting there that were quite elderly, that were talking about being on the wrong side of decisions that were made in the past. For example, creating the community center or creating the Village Green. And now they sit on the right side and said, man, what a great decision this was. Because if it wasn't for this community center, I would be at home alone, wondering what to do next. And by the way, boredom for teenagers can be just as damaging as boredom for elderly. We need to keep them active. We need to keep them active and challenged. And what can we do to help them? What else? Island connectivity. It's a big one. You know, I was a person who was never going to get a golf cart because I thought I was going to walk everywhere. I was proved wrong. I bought a golf cart, and now I love it. But now I'm moving away from it. I'm walking more. And what I've noticed in the walking that I do around this island is there are not a lot of places that are very friendly to walk. Cranon Park, which is the most connective artery in our island, does not have enough canopy and is hot and is tiresome, and it's not a friendly place to walk. How can we turn that into a more friendly place to walk? And how could that also tie into the local businesses and getting people from one place to the other to try new things? Open green spaces. How do we reduce the density of the island without kicking people off necessarily? How do we get more green spaces? And what do we do with those green spaces? So at the beginning, I mentioned, I tried to change the word from issues to circumstances and things that we face. I want to be very clear. I don't see these as negative things. I actually have always considered myself a very much a silver lining person. And what I see about those of us who will be honored enough to be on dais over the next four, eight, ten years, we have an incredible responsibility, and this is an incredible time in the history of Kiwis Kane. And I for one see a huge, huge amount of opportunity for doing the right thing, which, by the way, as I mentioned before, is always the right thing to do. I hope that answers your question, man.
Definitely does. So my next question is, if you were to take office, what are the top three things you would do?
So I, I, I wrote something down that my friend, my friend Simon Senek said once. He said, leadership is not a rank to be achieved. Leadership is a responsibility to see those around you rise. They also say a rising tide lifts all ships. The only way that I can do that is something that I've done successfully throughout my career has been coaching others to be the best version of themselves, whether it be in business or personal. As a matter of fact, today I call myself a business development leadership coach. And part of that is knowing who the players are, knowing who the team is. I imagine the first sixty to ninety days, I will be meeting with every department head and their team to understand what their priorities are, what drives them, what makes them happy, what are the things that they work for. Somebody once told me, it was a gentleman who owns a very, a very successful law firm, and he, he mentioned to me that on some of these big cases that they win, they generally get some kind of a bonus, right? And that bonus goes directly to the people that were responsible for doing the work, the diligence that allows the tops, the partners of that firm to win their cases. And he would give the entirety of that bonus to the people that actually do the work. And what, what was interesting to, to hear from this person was, these are the people that are working eighteen, twenty hours a day. They're working one hundred and fifty hours a week in preparation for, for, for a case. And when you do these types of things and you appreciate the team and you help them and facilitate them to rise, their answer is, when the case is over is, when is the next case? That's the kind of, that's the kind of motivation that leaders, I believe, have to find in their people. And so my first sixty to ninety days is going to be sitting, sitting down with the team. I personally met with Stephen Williamson on a couple of occasions, one more formally than others. And what I've seen he's done in the last year and a half is been really focused on putting the right people in the right place, making, identifying certain skill sets, putting them in the places that they're going to be most successful. And now he's getting ramped up to do some big, big changes within this island. And I think that our job, more than anything on council, is again, to be responsible, to make sure that those around us rise, to be, to be a liaison between the village and our constituency, to engage the population of Kiwis Kane, to, to, in my case, I would like to set up office hours, a certain extent of office hours. I'd like to commit a certain amount of time to responding to emails. I want people to feel as though they can approach me at any given moment just to be heard. It's not an easy thing sometimes because we tend to want to go with what our beliefs are. Well, I learned in my travels, especially when I lived abroad, how important perspective is, despite the fact that you agree with it or not. I for one am somebody that values all perspective, whether I agree with it or not. Sometimes I value the ones I don't agree with necessarily or don't see even more so, simply because for the most part, they, they teach me what my blind spots are. And that's where perspective comes in. I want to have as little blind spots as I possibly can. It's the only way that I'm going to be able to make good decisions for the island. And that is in essence what I want to do. So I hope that answers your question, Alex.
I like.
Now, I keep calling you Alex, but it's not Alex. It's Alejandro.
No, but Alex works.
Alex, like A L E X. You can use that.
I do Alex. I do Ale and Alejandro. I like what you said. Perspective teaches you your blind spots. I like that, you know, it's like, and it makes sense because you're focused in this direction, right? And then somebody that doesn't agree necessarily comes to you with, with their pain point, and you're like, ah, I didn't.
And it goes hand with, hand in hand with something else I learned. Context is definitive. Give you an example or a metaphor. You're walking down the street and you see a parent grab a child by the arm forcefully and drag him. Your first thought is bad parenting, abusive parenting, not good. But in the grander context, if you look closely, and you might have realized that the reason the person grabbed that child's arm is because there was a car and he was about to go out into the street, all of a sudden, the parent is a hero. This is why sometimes context is definitive, and this is why engagement and talking with people face to face is more important and will always trump following any chat that's led by any person that's given some kind of narrative. Because context is always missing. And so context, when you look at context and you look at perspective, if you can gain more and more of that, you'll be in a much better place to make the right decision every time.
I like it. Fair.
Thanks.
So can you share with us some of the things you believe the village is doing well?
So many things. I mean, I, I might take, take a mirror and ask you, how do you feel about your quality of your life, Ale?
Fantastic.
I mean, I feel blessed. Now, can I say it's the village that's doing that, all of it? No. A lot of it comes from me and the love that I'm surrounded by and my parents and my family. But for all intensive purposes, this is a beautiful island, okay? It's a gorgeous place to come. People come from all over the world to come to our Billbags Park or to Cranon Park. That's something, there's something to be said for that. When I tell people where I live, there's not a single person that I've ever told that I live on Kiwis Kane that isn't, that doesn't respond with, oh, my God, you're so lucky. That place is amazing. Our services, fire and police, a hundred percent top notch. Super impressed with Chief Sosa and what he's doing with regards to community outreach. The guy talks well. He presents himself well. He listens to the community. He's out there talking to kids. I think I heard the other day that he's given about three to four hundred kids training on scooter safety. Amazing. Chief Lang, we actually happened to grow up together. What a great, what an amazing guy. Started with a volunteer fire station, is now the chief of fire. Service levels off the charts. What else do we do well? Community center. Interestingly enough, one of the most contentious build outs that has ever happened on Kiwis Kane, and now they're talking about expansion. And believe me, and, and, and by the way, I mentioned more green spaces, and I totally understand that expansion means more concrete, which is not what I want. But if it's in the form of a rec center that's even more functional and can do more for our community, then go for it. A hundred percent for it. The Village Green. There's not a single person that comes to visit me from off the island that when they get to my house, the first thing they say to me is like, huh, what is that amazing park you guys have? There's a thousand kids out there playing soccer, field hockey, football. You have parents out there, parents standing out there with Yetis, and we all know it's not always water in there, having a good time, right? Engaging. I mean, it's, I remember when I moved back here, it was the night before I moved back, it was one evening, and I, and my good, good, close friend of mine calls me, he says, hey, come out to the green. We're out at one of the kids' football games. And I drove by and it was, Alex, it was a thousand, a thousand kids playing and having a great time. Our beaches, look, yes, are the things to complain about, the sargassum. That's a natural thing to complain about. That's not the village's problem. Not to mention that naturally, sargassum is good for our beaches. When it rots and it gets into the sand, it helps us retain some of that beach. But our beaches are gorgeous, and unless you have, I think it's the southeasterly wind, you have a beautiful day out there. I just went out there kayaking with the guys from Philbag with Manny Rianda and my child, my kid. We went all the way, we took a kayak to, to the lighthouse and back. Normally, my kid would be complaining the entire time that it's hot. We saw Manatee. We saw stingray. We took pictures. We picked up garbage. I mean, what do we do well? So many things. What can we do better? We can engage more with each other. Maybe we can get off the chats a little bit. Maybe instead of being on the chat, you can call your friends. Maybe instead of doing Zoom calls all the time, get out and walk. You know, the, the village is working on a lot of things, and I'm sure as I get in deeper, there's going to be a lot of things that we can, we can improve. If there wasn't, then there would be no reason for me to run on, to even run for, for council. But I do believe we do an extraordinary job in so many respects. You know, there's been complaints about maintenance. You know, maintenance is a tough thing. We build out a lot. Do we have good plans for maintenance? I see it getting better. I see every day getting better. You know, can we get more green spaces? Yeah, absolutely. Can we get more program? Yeah, absolutely. I'm sure there's so many things that we could do better. And, and the idea is to go in there and see where I can add value. If I can't add value to a particular issue, then I'll move on to the next one. I'm not audacious enough to think that I know it all. I certainly do not. But I do know that we have remarkable people, not only working for the village, but in this community that I can parlay, that I can talk to, that I can engage to get their ideas and let them be heard and then bring those ideas to the table. And hopefully, out of the bucket of ideas that I come with, if we can get two or three that are really great winners, then I'm super happy.
So I know you already talked about getting people's perspectives and not necessarily because they agree with you or not. The question is, how would you work with those that oppose your ideas?
I mean, it's an interesting question because the latter would be, how do I work with everyone that just likes my ideas? And I, I want them both. I think there needs to be a balance. We talked about perspective earlier. And while it's not always easy, I very much strive not to judge perspective. First of all, it's not my job. Second of all, it's exhausting. And third of all, nothing good comes from it. So what I always try to look for is when I'm talking to somebody or having a discourse with somebody and they have a difference of opinion, I try to find the value or the commonality in their difference of opinion to what mine is. Example, there are so many people here that probably disagree with each other, if you go to the detail and the granularity. But if we start way at the top, right? Let's start ten thousand miles up. I believe that we all have one thing in common on this island, for sure. We all love it here. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. So let's start there, and then let's start drooling down. And when you start to see the divergence in ideas, pause. Have a moment. Discuss it. Have a conversation. I'm not here to change anybody's mind. I'm here to share my thoughts. And what I'm hopeful is that with my thoughts and those of others, we can find all the common parts, we can make sure they're a majority, and then we can move forward with it, because that's what representative government is all about. It's about the majority. There's, you're never going to please everyone. You're never going to agree with everyone. Not everyone's going to agree or even like you. But the moment you stop trying to hurry up and be right, the more opportunity there is to learn. And that's how I face everything. And, and by the way, I'm an incredibly opinionated person. You can only imagine how many times I've run into somebody that doesn't agree with me. But that's okay. That's what makes us human. That's what keeps the balance. That's what keeps anyone from going too far right, too far left. That's what keeps anyone from going too far right, too far left, too far up, too far down. We want to stay right in the middle. We want to move together collectively. If we can do that, we'll be in a good place.
Yeah, like that. It's important not to lose the conversation, you know?
Hundred percent. Well said.
So if elected, um, and by the time you finish with their, you know, how many terms that would be, how would you like to be remembered as?
I think just as somebody that added value. That's it. I, I mean, I guess for my kids, maybe I want them to remember one very important lesson in that any single person can make a positive impact on this world. And furthermore, if more single people did that, then our world would be better every day. And then maybe the idea of like compound interest, if you improve yourself one percent, little baby step, every single day, at the end of the year, you'll be thirty eight hundred percent better than you were when you started the year. And then it goes back to just doing the right thing. And so longer answer, but short, the short answer was I, I, I hope I'm remembered as somebody who added value to the history of Kibiskane. That's it.
You know, working in government is stressful, just like anything, right? You know, but so after a long stressful day, what do you do to relax?
So I've always been big on sports and exercise. Uh, it helps me focus, uh, it helps me calm down, but more recently, I've become much more consistent about it. And so for those of you who haven't seen me out there, uh, I'm very consistent at least at least five days on average, six days a week, I'm up about five thirty in the morning and I'm on the road at six o'clock walking or exercising, whether it be at the gym or walking around the island. Generally, when I do that, I listen to audiobooks. Uh, I'm a little bit, uh, I don't know if hyperactive is the word, but reading books, sitting down has been changed, is challenging to me, whereas listening while active allows me to focus and, and grab a lot more. So I always listen. So I'm, I'm reading, I'm trying to read about a book a week or something like that. Uh, all kinds of things. Um, happy to share a reading book list with anybody who reaches out. And, and then I like, I like spending time with my daughters. We have so much fun. They, people always say kids grow up so fast. And when they see me, they always tell me, enjoy these years, don't miss them. And my answer is, oh, believe me, I am. Every day, I spend time with them. When I'm done in my morning shift, I do kind, I do my morning shift, which is an area of time that I carved out for myself, which is to exercise and wa- walk or run. Then when I come back home, I do morning with my daughters, which is always breakfast together. We make a really healthy smoothie that we share together and we talk about our day and we set ourselves up for a great day. Those are the things that I do to, to start my day. And then from time to time, I will journal. Uh, I'll meditate. Uh, journaling is mostly about getting my thoughts together, what my goals are for a week. And then I go into my day to day. And sometimes I get knocked down and then I remind myself, we get knocked down so that we can learn how to get back up and just get back up.
Uh, next question is, what do you believe makes you stand out from other candidates?
So the first thing that occurs to me is, it's funny, it was like, uh, it was something we thought of at one point, uh, joking around as a slogan. And the slogan was, don't take my word for it. Ask the people that know me or ask my friends, right? So I almost want to apply that here. What makes me different than the other candidates? Maybe ask my friends. Uh, I'm hopeful that what makes me different is maybe this entire video, maybe, maybe this interview of what I said and how I said it comes off as different. I like to think of myself as somebody who's been serving this community for some time now. I mean, granted, four years is a drop in the bucket in the grand scheme of things, but for four years I have been doing something very, a very active role, taking a very active role, not only in education, but also, uh, helping kids, helping teachers finance their income through programming that they can teach after school. I, I volunteered as a, as a coach, as a softball coach for some time. I did that actually as a kid. I used to volunteer as a soccer coach here on Kibiskane as well for IMCA when they were back here. I've done a couple cleanups with Philabag. There was, there was something I read somewhere, um, and I didn't like the word of the use, the use of the word power. Uh, because sometimes that's negatively taken, but uh, the power that we earn is directly related to the amount of time we're willing to serve and contribute. One of my mottos, it's funny, some of the jobs or some of the positions that I've had in the past is this consulting, right? And every time when somebody asks me, why do you do what you do? It's always been around trying to find a grander scale to create a, uh, an additional, bigger impact in a positive way to more people that I possibly can. And so I really believe it, that I live by it. I love this community. I owe this community so much. And so I don't know if any other candidate could say that. But if they can, I hope it's true. I hope they can. But those are the things that come to mind. You know, yeah, servitude and, and just, just the loving of my community and, and the sincerity of really wanting to do the absolute best for my neighbors. That's it.
Hey, you, you mentioned time and I, I skipped a question by, by mistake. What, um, how much time do you plan to dedicate to this position?
Oh, okay. That's a pragmatic question. Um, I don't know how to answer that other than however much value the village needs from me. Uh, I think whatever the village needs is probably what I'm going to strive to give it. It might be in the form of a couple of hours. I mentioned it before, I'm not, you won't ever see me talking unless I really think I'm adding value. Uh, I'm not the type of person that wants to just talk about every subject. I, I, I'm not. I, I'll listen. I'm not a, I'm not a big guy on small talk. I really like talking about ideas, um, and things that are grander and bigger than myself. And so when you mentioned time, one thing did strike me. The other day I was talking to my daughter and she, I asked her to come with me to the grocery store and she said, it depends. And I said, what's that? It depends. Are you going to talk to everybody in? And I said, she said, okay, then I'm not going. And, and so you asked about time, my ten minute grocery trip very easily for me turns into an hour. So while I might tell you I'm willing to put in ten hours a ye- a, a week, for all intensive purposes, it might become very, very much more of that, but you know, if you love what you do, they always say that if you really love what you do and you're passionate about what you do, you never work a day in your life. And so time is all relative, right? Uh, time seems a lot longer when you're not having fun. I, I suggest that I'm going to have a hell of a ride. I'm going to have a great time. I'm going to do the best that I can. So whatever, whatever it looks like to be able to accomplish that, that's the time I'm going to give it.
So what is, what is a go to meal for you when you have a last minute guest?
Uh, so I've always been a very much a, a grill guy. And I always have meat in the freezer. So for me, it's super easy and I'm not, I don't overdouse my states with anything. I just somehow have this incredible knack of knowing exactly when to put the meat on, when to, when to put the salt and pepper on, which is generally mostly what I use, and then when to take it off. And so for me, it's just grill it up.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect. A, I have two, well, they're all Kibiskane related questions, but, uh, what do you love most about the key? I know you top, tapped about it the entire time, but you know, gotta, I gotta ask.
I mean, I think, I think, you know, even when you talk about these resiliency projects, right? I think people, it's lost on people that we live on a barrier island. I go back to the first bus ride I took and I was coming back from Ponce in ninth grade. We were going over the bridge and I looked back and saw the skyline, which by the way, looks nothing like what it looks like today. And I thought to myself, dude, I live on an island surrounded by beaches. Beaches used to be a place as a kid that we had to plan an entire day around, pack for about an hour, drive for about an hour through draw bridges, sit down, get sunburned and then have to pack everything up and then drive another hour. Today, on a whim, I get in my golf club, car, I go to the beach club, I swim, I don't know, quarter of a mile, I come back, I take a shower there, I come back and I'm back in my house within an hour and fifteen minutes tops. And then I get hungry and I walk across the street to Winn-Dixie. I mean, what's not to like about this place? I really love seeing all the kids everywhere. It reminds me of when I was a kid, we, we used to live in, in Kendall, South Miami area. And I remember anytime I left my house, I had to tell my parents where I was going. I had to call them from wherever I arrived. I had to, they had to get in a car to take me anywhere. And then we moved here, I get my bike, I look at my parents, I'm going for a ride. Bye. And I would literally leave ten o'clock in the morning and arrive back at home seven o'clock at night with no questions asked. Everything's hunky dory. I mean, the level of freedom and just beauty, beauty that we're surrounded with is amazing. We have volleyball courts, we got the rec center. I mean, there's so many things I love about Kibiskane. And then, and, and I always kind of knew this, but I think I was validated two years ago when I started my run for office. There is, and I said it before and I'm saying it again, there is incredible, remarkable collection of people from all over the world that live on this for all intensive purposes, two by two mile little residential jewel. And so if that doesn't tell you why I love Kibiskane, then nothing will.
And lastly, what is a perfect weekend for you and your family in the key?
Perfect. Uh, easy. Five thirty in the morning, get up, tall glass of water, go out for a walk, listen to a book, maybe a run, maybe the gym, depending on the day. Come back home, make coffee for my wife, that wakes her up. Um, watch a little bit of TV with my daughters, make a giant breakfast for the family, which consists of almost always the same croissants, they know this too. Croissants, scrambled eggs with melted cheese, bacon, tater tots, orange juice and coffee. Of course, the smoothie, by the way, my smoothie recipe is avocado, uh, broccoli, banana, blueberry, strawberry, coconut water and cranberry juice, all together in a blender with ice. Delicious. Also a little bit of protein, protein shake. Uh, or protein powder. Then after that meal, I take my kids either to the beach or to the park. We do some fun stuff, get them tired, uh, kill some of those calories and then we go and get an acai bowl. And my two daughters and myself sit on the village green and we eat that thing faster than you could say spit. I mean, it's crazy. The three of us with three spoons just going at it. Sometimes we argue a little bit about who gets the last banana, but you know, we're, we're pretty good. Then after that, uh, sometimes we'll wash the golf cart. Kids love doing that. It's their way of earning a little extra income. So they love that part too. And then, and then we decide from there, what's next? And generally I'll come back. My wife likes to, to chill in the apartment. She likes the air conditioning. Plus we just renovated our apartments, so she, she's reveling in that. And then we'll either meet up with our friends to go out on the boat. Uh, we'll spend an afternoon at, uh, with our friends at the yacht club. Uh, today, for example, at one o'clock, I gotta go watch the Finns game with my brothers, with my brothers and my dad, probably grill up some lunch there too. I always try to do play dates with my kids. A lot of times it's kids coming over to our house, sometimes going out. Uh, and then in the evening, I have, and I was just with them, uh, Friday night, I have an incredible core of about twelve to fifteen friends. We were hanging out the other night, we ended up coming out to my house for an after party. Alejandro, I was overwhelmed by love. And, and how lucky I am to have found this incredible group of friends. Some of them I've known since I was eight years old. Some of them stood in my wedding, some of them I only met a year ago, but it's this incredible core group of friends that I've even had people come to us and say, guys, you guys are so awesome when you're all together because we go, we do everything together. And we're just so lucky. And they all have kids and they're all the same age as my kids, which makes it unreal. I mean, it's, it's fantastic. So that, I don't know if I diverted, but yeah, that's kind of my amazing.
Wonderful. Oscar, thank you so much for jumping on the show and telling us your story behind your inspiration for running and, and some of the reasons and the details. I appreciate that and, and good luck.
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to say just one last thing. Number one, neighbors of Kibiskane, I, look, I'm here and I said it, I believe on, on Tony Witten's podcast as well. I don't know anybody else that's going to work harder for you. I would be honored if selected. And if not, that's okay too. It's not going to keep me from serving. I'm going to stay involved. I ran two years ago, I didn't win. I stayed involved, I'm running again. If I don't win, I'm going to stay involved and I'm going to run again. And I'm going to keep doing that as long as I think I can add value. If you want to learn about me, um, there's a couple of different ways. I have an Instagram page. I have a website, sardinasforcouncil.com. On that website, you can find my phone number. It is my phone number. It is not a robot. If you ever see a number coming in, uh, and, and actually I don't have it memorized, so let me, let me just, it's three zero five nine zero zero three two two one. I'll be the only one answering that. If you get a call from there, it's me. Just ask me whatever you'd like to ask me. Do your diligence, do your homework, get to know us, all, all five of us. Uh, we're all great people, even from the very top level, like I like to start. At the very least, we're all willing to serve and take on a volunteer job to do the best that we can possibly do for this island. So for that, I admire all five of us. Just do your homework and, and thank you so much for putting your faith in me. And I really look forward to talking to you and hearing from you and go visit my website. And if you have any questions by all means, just give me a call. I hope you all have a amazing Sunday and go Dolphins.
I'll make sure I put all the information in the show notes for those that are interested. And Oscar, thank you again.
Awesome. Thank you, Alejandro. I'll talk to you soon, buddy.